Good evening, a great crowd tonight. I want to thank everyone for coming on and joining us. A lot of trophies out there that we see and posters. Great to have you here.
Yes, I think Tony is the only gentleman that's excused and I expect Mark later.
That said, I'd appreciate a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of March 16th, 2016. Seconded. And seconded. Any questions or comments? If not all in favor? Any opposed or any abstentions? Under adjustments for the agenda, we are removing item 14 until next week with, in terms of the executive session for this evening. I don't know if there are any other adjustments to the agenda. Now is the time typically when we reserve time, the agenda for people in the audience to address the board. And we'd welcome you, if you wish to do that, to come to the podium and state your name.
I'm sorry, my name is Josh Morris. I'm a community member of RSU 22. It feels like I'm spoiling part of the celebration, but I feel like this is important. I have some statistics, or really more like just some descriptive data. About a month ago, we went after negotiations that had been going back and forth between year 22 and the board. This seemed to have been going on and it didn't seem like a whole lot of headway was being made from the perspective of those outside of the process. And so, you know, one of the pieces that I was concerned about was the degree of expressed dissatisfaction that a number of teachers have expressed. And I wanted to get a better sense of really what that meant, like what's the real impact? And so, survey was provided to the teachers about a month ago. And 125 teachers responded. And I was providing you some of the information that came from that. And I think it's important because if, for me looking at it, it highlighted a couple of big points. It's less about perhaps the content of the negotiation because I know many of you and I know that you're good people. And I know that the teachers who are negotiating are good people and intentions are good. My concern is that there still isn't an opportunity to get a real feel for what's driving the decision-making process. And I know that there have been times when the transparency of the process was not revealed for legal reasons, for state policy. And I believe, I'm under the impression, since this has gone to mediation, that that's not the case. And that there's an opportunity to have more transparency about the negotiation. And I'm hoping that that can happen because one of the pieces that I want to point out in this data is that of 125 people that responded, 78.4% said that they, because of the salary issue, it's 98 of 120 teachers. The 125 teachers, 98 of those who responded said that they have considered leaving the district because of salary issues. They said it. So there's some, you know, some spirit of that. I went on and within the survey, I was asked, well, how many of you have actually looked for a job specifically because of salary issues? 75. 60% of those who responded. Granted, that's not the entire group of teachers, but that's a pretty big number. The data also looks at breakdown. This isn't one group or another. It's almost equal in terms of the experience of the teachers. And what you'll find when you look at the data also is that the teachers who are really looking or on their way out, and perhaps this is good for some of the folks listening, is these people have experience. These people have knowledge and expertise and they carry the institutional and community memory of RSU 22. And a good number of them are thinking that it may be time to leave because of the salary issue. You know, salary is just one of the pieces and I don't want to get too specific around that. But beyond that, part of it is really about communication. And this is one venue where sort of communication happens. I mean, we're going to talk to you and you're listening. You all have been really receptive. I think it's been harder to have a real, open discussion and hear back about really what's driving this process from the perspective of the board. And to dig down a little bit deeper within the results, some of the questions that were asked of teachers was about the attribution of satisfaction and dissatisfaction. And if you look at those different bar graphs, it seems apparent that one of the big issues is that many people who responded don't have a feel that they are being supported by the board or the administration, the district administration in particular. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Give them all away. You know, the degree of satisfaction, when they talk about it, the one that really comes up is salary. Not so much work environment, it seems like it's shared. The continuing education, people are really kind of satisfied. When they make the attribution, you know, as your morale, the negatives being impacted, one of the questions, and then to what extent you attribute it to various domains. The one that stands out is salary. Again, work environment, eh, not really. Continuing education, not really. And then when they look at where they feel like their morale is being impacted, the people agree, you know, of the 120 or 125 responses, the ones that strongly agree that their morale has been negatively impacted by the support from the district administration, almost 60 of those responses, almost half, followed by almost 40 who would agree with that statement. The sad part is, is not just that. That's sort of compounded by the fact that it's the same perception of the board. The people who are asking don't feel like they're on their side. And knowing many of you, that just hurts because I don't think that's the message. I don't think you're doing this to hurt morale. I don't think that you're doing this to ask people to leave. And yet somehow the message is not coming back. And it would be an absolute tragedy if the legacy that you all leave behind in some way, because this is going to take some time to clean up, is one in which people don't feel like they understood you or you don't feel understood. And so, I would just make a community member's request that there is an opportunity, not this, but a real opportunity where people consider down and people from the community can be involved and hear what's the rationale for the negotiations, the way that they stand? What's the rationale for keeping it this way? And to have a conversation, not just a one-person statement followed by another person's statement. We're all people and we're town people, we're friends, we're neighbors. I think it's time. And so, I would ask that you all consider a chance to do that.
Thanks, Josh.
I'm Joy. I don't want to be redundant or anything, but I just think that as being a student, not a lot of kids would come up here and do this, but I think I'm speaking for the majority of students here. I don't know all the teachers here, but I do care about the ones that I know just as much as they care about their students. And with the whole salary thing, it's like you all have the statistics and you know that they're thinking of leaving. And I don't want them to leave. And they don't want to, you know, it comes down to that thing. That's unfortunate, but it happens. I think that when it comes to the time, like, are you staying, are you going? Yes, no, you need to answer. Then you need to get replacements, but those will leave. Not only will it affect, but it will affect us and our education because who will be coming back, we won't know them as well. It might not be as experienced. I'm going to keep this short because I don't want, you know, until I keep reiterating. But I just think that as a student, you should know that I really do care about the teachers and I think that this is really important. So, I should.
Thank you, Joy.
Good evening, everybody. Sean Kimball. I've been here for eight years, been a science teacher for the last four and a half or so. I spoke briefly before, just speaking to the morale. I mean, I'm a person that wears my heart on my sleeve. I've been a leader my whole life. I've come here for these eight years and I have to say that I've sat, you know, as a tech integrator, I'm somewhat of an administrative type, but I've kind of sat back. And I really, I'm totally bewildered because I don't understand what the holdup is. We are so close together. I sat here last night in a budget meeting, I'm trying to educate myself about this. I got involved with the steering committee. I want to know both sides and I try to speak to everybody, but it's gone way too far. Our school's getting damaged, seriously damaged. We can't wait. The room in last, you know, if this goes through the summer, you know, we're the next El Faro about to happen. We need to really take care of this. And I, you know, Mr. Jass said that we, last night in the budget meeting, that we should be on par with other schools. I don't know anybody that disagrees with that. Just get us close to that point. And I think those numbers are already there from what I understand. The sticking point seems to be that something at the bottom, instead of, you know, you've agreed kind of get rid of the Merrick Day, which was tremendously destructive, which started this whole thing, I believe. And the sticking point is whether we, you know, we have something strong enough to get rid of weak teachers. It seems that hardly anybody has been identified as weak teachers, except the people that are on intensive assistance. If you don't know what that program, and I hope that the board knows exactly what that program is. You need to know so that you can speak to the people on the negotiating team. That is as strong, or stronger than the language, in my opinion, and I think others, is what is in there for intensive assistance. We need to take care of this. There's three people leaving the science department. Okay, three people. We could start to say why they're leaving and this or that, but I am darn sure, and I know those people very well, that if morale was good here and we felt we were going forward in this district, they would not be leaving this year. I'm almost positive of that. I can reaffirm that tomorrow morning when I come into school, and I will. We also are spending so much money. How did it go so long that lawyers had to get involved? And our side is paid for because we pay those dues all the time, but the board is expending so much money on that. We didn't need to go here. Some reason, I guess the message just didn't get there, we are so close. We need to take care of this. It's a waste of time, it really is. You know, all of us could talk about why we're, you know, we're here for all the right reasons, but we're here in not doing the things I like to be doing for my students. Today's the day that I have no prep. I have a 10-minute lunch and wrote an email to a parent and had a surprise meeting for this and a meeting for that. We all live our lives like that. I believe that everybody knows that we deserve the salary commensurate with the people around us. I don't think any doubt. And last night it was discussed and I can't remember your name, so you asked, what is that? Where would we like to be if we could have the money to do what we want to? You know, when Augustus talked-
Jason, by the way.
Yeah, Jason, thank you. And I appreciate your questions last night. They taught me a real lot. And that's where we need to think, where we want to be. Where do we want to be? Let's try to get there. I know we can't, but for us to sit down at the table and bring up all these other little things when there just seems to be maybe one or two little things, let's take care of it. The kids deserve it, the school deserves it. Our group is at the point where if we don't feel that people are negotiating fairly with us, this could get ugly. We're investigating things, we're getting legal opinions on what we can do. We don't want to go there. These students are all going to lose if we start working to the contract. We don't want to go there and there's no need to. Because if it does get ugly, all the skeletons will be out of the closet. And I really think that this district will be severely damaged. And yes, I want to stay here. I've got enough experience where it's difficult for me to go somewhere else. But I want to rebuild this school. We've got a new principal here that can take us there. She wants to empower people to be leaders so we can do some great things. We need to get going forward instead of sliding back, 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 and everybody trying to run out the door. Please work with us. We aren't being that unreasonable. And please, everybody realize how close we are. The teachers did not ask for more money than the budget provided. We came in with a number that fit. I thought, I thought that then it was foolish because we're at the point where we should ask for more because we're going to have to give some away. We didn't ask for too much. We asked to level out the salary scale and to get close to all those people around us. Please.
Sean, thank you. I want to thank you for your comments and I know we've been going on for months, people have said there have been many people who have stood up and spoken from their heart on this issue. And I can tell you that we have and continue to listen carefully. It has been sort of indicated already, none of us, you know, like this direction. None of us like the morale issues. We don't want to see that happen. We're in agreement on that issue. We have to find a way to move forward on this negotiation. And I think the process has played out and we've tried to respect that process and there's been some, I think, great progress there. We want to get it done. I wanted to, in my board, in my chair comments, I wanted to make a comment about the work that I've been happy to see going on between the SMART committee and the policy committee recently. I think it's been really excellent. It's been a collaborative process. I think there are, there's a direction there and ideas there that are going in a great direction that I think will, you know, get us where we need to go there. I applaud that effort on both sides. I'd like to think that, you know, that's where we're going. But this has been a process and as painful as it's been on all sides here, I think it's fair to say, we hear what you're saying. We don't want that either. We want to find a way to address that and move on. So again, I do thank everyone for their thoughts over the last many months. And we do want to find a way, find a way to move forward. We have quite a bit on the agenda this evening again. Obviously, we want to let our young students here have a chance to present and get home at a reasonable hour as well. On the agenda, otherwise under the board chair, we had noted the National School Board Conference that I had the opportunity, opportunity to attend with Karen and Amanda and Wally. I'd let them make any comments they want. I think if we can be fairly brief on this issue, the better. But if anything you guys would like to report on, that's great.
I thought it was a great time. I thank you for the opportunity to go. It was really, it was the first time I've been to a national conference and the caliber was fantastic. I think I took many notes and I'll clean them up and share them, but I think one of the things that was helpful to hear is that struggles that we experience have been experienced by other districts before and they've overcome them and come out better. And, you know, out of the ash comes the phoenix, so to speak. And so, we did hear many stories about that and that was really a nice message to hear because I think, as Niles said, no one likes the position that we're in right now. So, it was really, again, I'll share my notes. I'd share them with anyone who would like them. But thank you for the opportunity to go. It was really very helpful.
I had some opportunities to sit through some different sessions on roles of board members, a lot of stuff for new board members, so it was very educational for me. Think maybe sometime in the future, maybe we can start looking at like an orientation process for new board members. And then that'll give me an opportunity to share some of that information at that point to make it a lot easier as we have new board members coming on in the future. So maybe that can be a future agenda item at some point.
I spent most of my time going to the strategic plan-related workshops, but one of the ones I thought was, the most beneficial was related to a research study called Lighthouse Studies regarding the effectiveness of school boards. And it's a multi-year study that they found statistically significant evidence that the tenure of a superintendent and the tenure of a school board does impact student performance. And that boards that have a lot of turnover with both membership as well as at the superintendent level, this, it does impact the student academic performance and experience. So I bought the book and so it belongs to the district. I'm reading it and I'll be sharing it with you all as lending library at the central office. But I think there's a lot of lessons learned and that one of them is to operate as a balanced board and to understand that when there's turnover among the board, there's a, there's a paradigm shift. And that it, for me, it was a check, checks and balance because as a new board member, I think it's often tempting to come in and want to make your mark, but that can be to the detriment of the district and the morale of the district as well as student performance. So it was extremely enlightening and I am willing to share after I educate myself.
Thank you all. Yeah, I would echo your comments. In fact, it was in Boston, it was a great opportunity to be so close, but great sessions and I think a lot of takeaways for us will apply here. I think just on Karen's last point, it's an issue that we've discussed as a board and I think it's one that bears repeating and a lot of examination as our board continues to change. We've got a lot of turnover at the board and we'll continue to do so the next two years. And so, that issue of transition would be a really important one for this board going forward. So thank you. Move on to item six, personnel.
Under personnel, resignations. I would like to report, accepted three teacher resignations. Jenny Barton and Joy Reinkler from Smith School due to retirement and also literacy specialist from McGraw, Jane Litwack. I also have made two transfers. Sue Ward from kindergarten teacher to grade two at McGraw. Michelle Campbell from grade five to English Language Arts at Wagner.
Under my report, reading essential behaviors outcomes proclamation this evening is Heath.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves, our schools and the community support systems, and should welcome and encourage all members of our community to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Heath. Student recognition, we have obviously a number of guests with us this evening. So Mr. Micho, where did I see him? Mr. Micho, right here. So you want to start, Mr. Micho?
Actually, we'll start with the board's level of grade levels. So Mr. Ross, would you-
All right, okay. Very good. Mr. Ross.
With my permission, may I make a little announcement about Mr. Ross?
Yeah, sure. May, yeah. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of last night of introducing Sue Berry. Sue is the president-elect of the Maine Music Educators Association. And this past January, myself and additional more, with the help of a number of community members, we nominated Mr. Ross for the honor of Maine Music Educator of the Year. And so, the surprise last night was that he was awarded this award. We're having a banquet in mid-May where he'll receive some other accolades at that time. But it was made public last night that Mr. Ross is the Maine Music Educator of the Year. I don't want to take up all of mine, but I think the award speaks for itself. I didn't want to say I could go on and on and on. The attributes that Mr. Ross had. And it was very funny to me last night that he was speechless. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ross.
Good evening. As you have seen in the past few years, we have quite a group of students that are involved in our jazz band and show choir program from sixth grade right up through to 12th grade. And this year, another successful year all throughout the district. So I wanted to take a moment this evening to bring our students up here to have them be recognized. And if you're in, I'm going to have jazz band and show choir from Wagner come up together. We have a baseball game, a softball game, and tracks and Bucks Sports, so this is not everybody. But even, could I have all my jazz band and show choir? So it's hard to believe I've been here 18 years already. I can feel like I'm the new guy, but I'm really not the new guy. So I remember when we started Honey Corals, it started Wagner Show Choir a year or two before I got there. And I think one year I saw them, they did Annie, it was awesome. I was really nervous about having to do something with that. And Mr. Micho had had a jazz band going as well for, I don't know how many years before I was here. And we started off, I think I started off with 12 students in show choir and jazz band. I think it was around 16 or 18. And we met twice a week in the morning before school so kids could also do sports after school. Well, we still do that. We augmented quite a bit, actually. If you're in show choir, I tell you to kiss away your February vacation. You're, we're going to rehearse. And they do a lot of, it's not just the mornings anymore. We're doing nights, we're doing weekends, we're doing vacations. And they are amazing to come to that and the parents. Right now, I think our jazz band is around 25 students and our course, I think, was 37 or 38. So lots of, lots of participation. And then they're doing, they're in the top tier level in the state. And what I love about what we're able to do is there's, there are several schools around the state that are in the same level. And it's really good, not only for us to try to achieve that level, but to see what other schools are doing. And the competition for jazz band is awesome. They're with their nine, I think, in our division and four or five of them, like, all right there. It's so awesome. So I was talking to the jazz band, they had their fest, they had their festival first. And how it works is we have a grading system. So our goal is always to get a gold. Gold is the highest rating that you can get. And I tell my students on any given day, we can be right on fire and someone else is a little bit down and someone else can be on fire, but the gold is kind of the standard. So that's what we shoot for. We did not place this year, but we did get a gold in jazz band and our soloists, I think we had five or six soloists, all were recognized with a gold superior award, which put them in contention for an outstanding musicianship award, which they give out five in every division. It can be an instrumentalist or a singer- It can be an instrumentalist or a singer, if they happen to have a singer in their jazz band, and they have to spread those across. And I always say we had an average number of soloists, so what, nine in the division? So, 45, 50 people soloing. And the gentleman, we had a gentleman that won that award from Wagner who could not be here tonight, he's in Buckford at the track meet, Amblin Eisenhower, piano player, does a fantastic job, so I want to make sure that he is recognized for that. And so, I'm very pleased with what they did. In addition, these students also, for show choir, the next group, a couple of years ago, we're getting more participation in our groups, so having Frank Fort come in and such like that popped us up into a bigger division and we're doing very well in that division. The show choir had, I believe, nine soloists. All of them got superior ratings on their singing and we actually have Jaredon who's here tonight, great tenor sax player from Needham for something, he's great. We're doing, we did a Beatles show, if you haven't seen it. And I had this idea of doing something with Blackbird, but I didn't play guitar, so I'm calling all these guys and trying to call in a favor that I played with, like, I've done something with you and can you help me out here? And I couldn't find anyone. Jaredon, who doesn't play guitar, goes, "Well, I'll see if I can learn it." And came in, learned it, got the award. So, unbelievable. So, show choir and jazz band, just tremendous, tremendous group of kids. And you can see, so we should have 53 people here and you can just tell they're all doing, they're doing tons of stuff. You're going to see DI that's coming up later. They're just, our kids are involved, our kids are engaged, our kids are performing at a high level and we expect that. They don't have a choice. We go big or go home, you know? Give it all you got and then we'll just see where it falls. So, the show choir this year, tremendous. They do an amazing amount of work and we can't do it alone. The staff helps. I come to Hampden Academy, I work with them like this and trying to get rooms, trying to get into PAC with the department here. I work with David Grunion, getting equipment around. I work with Nick Raymond, trying to coordinate vehicles if we need things moved. Just, it's really, although it's a Wagner thing, it's really a district thing. And show choir, just tremendous. I just love, I love doing the show with them this year. They were doing a great job. Stephanie Earl has come in to help us do choreography and it's just, it's amazing. And one of the funnest things we get to do, it came out as a joke a few years ago, like, "Oh, we only get to do it that one time, so we'll do it at the concert." So, let's get down to Smith School. I said, "Well, let's make it a day." And so, we call it our East Coast tour. And so, I don't know how many years we've done it now, but we have graduated to trying to raise money to get a coach bus and we started Smith School. I get down early and set it all up and they come in and they have to tear down. And this year, right now, tentatively, we are going to go from Sears, from here, from Winterport to Searsport Elementary School and to All-States Catholic School in Bangor with Pizza Hut in the middle. So, that's just a great day we get, you know, the coach bus, we feel like movie stars and professional musicians for the day and it's, we always look forward to it. The show choir, with all of their amazing work and I'll tell you, it's a great competition there, people win and lose by less than a point. You know, it's that, honestly. And so, this is their award for third place in our division, in the big division, so I'm very proud, not only of that, I mean, I want the gold, I want you to know that we need that at high level or else. But, man, they're just, great passion and I hope that they continue it up, you know? We do music that's way more than music and I hope you understand that. You're a great bunch of kids, you're engaged, you're setting yourself up for success at the high school and that's one of the, kind of, the themes that we've been using this year is set yourself up for success. We don't set up for failure. We do what we do to get you ready for the next thing, so set yourself up for success. No doubt, they have already started that and I expect great things from you. And once you're my student, you're always my student, so I will hunt you down, find you. All right, congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, Mrs. Foh. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Congratulations, students. Thank you.
With the Voices Unlimited members, come on up. That concludes my instrumentalists. So, this is Hampden Academy's Voices Unlimited, part of them. This was a young group this year. We only had three seniors, a lot of freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. We did a show this year with the theme of rhythm and beat. I stretched them. After the first choreography rehearsal in January, a couple of them left with tears running down their face saying, "I can't do this." They absolutely did this. They actually, they won a gold award. Again, we go for the highest standard and that is the gold award. They actually tied for third place. Again, things are often decided by a point or two in show choir land and it really is very subjective because each one of them does a very different show. This group was fantastic. If you haven't seen it, you can still see it on May 10th here at their cabaret night or at Marsh River Theater in Brooks on Saturday night of Memorial Day weekend, which is their last performance. So, you do get another chance if you've missed it. They, like I said, they tied for third. The tie-breaking process actually brought them in fourth, so no big hardware, however, they have been the best group to work with. Again, they come in at seven o'clock in the morning, their rehearsal starts at 7:10, but that's when we start rehearsing. They have equipment to set up. We had an entire stage. Our instrumentalists, we put on stage this year, so they had to actually act while they played and it was just a really, really wonderful experience. I can't say more about the commitment level that these students have learned and the growth that I've seen in them. They're just a wonderful bunch to be around. So, congratulations to you guys. And I would just say that with three seniors leaving and 37-ish people at Wagner and 40-ish at Reed's Brook, I'm going to have a real rough time during auditions, so this is awesome. So, I would like to, I'm going to switch kids for a minute because I really want to talk about our All-State kids before I leave today. So, if I can have the All-State members come on up here. There are actually 14 of them in all. Awesome. In the past, I think the most we have ever had is seven going to All-State. We actually have 14 students participating in the All-State, the two All-State choirs, the All-State Orchestra and the All-State Band this year. Very proud of them, they're all at very high levels. Some of them are eligible to apply to be in All Eastern because their scores were that high, so I'm very proud of them. They've got a lot of work to do. They will be performing in concert on May 21st at the University of Maine with the All-State Chorus's Band and Orchestra, so congratulations. Thanks very much for recognizing us tonight.
Thank you very much for coming. Congratulations. Nice job. Thank you. Hey, Mr. Micho.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for having us again. I guess I'm back cleanup here, right? I'd like to have all the members of the band, the regular symphonic band, to come up. One thing that I think is important to do on a regular basis is to have our students assessed and to some degree of accountability about what we're doing each day in our classroom. We have certain targets that we strive for every day and we bring in outside people to listen to our kids and to give them an honest score based on a rubric, based on certain targets that we go for every day and you take all, each category, you give them a point value and you tally the points. And if they get an 88 to 100, they exceed the standard. And we don't mention anything else, we just, that's what we expect. And so, we brought out a night side assessor, Mr. Terry White, and I sent another recording of the performance to Mr. Jerry Bates, who you might remember years and years ago taught here in our, well, back then, SED 22. And I had him fill out the score sheet and being impartial and being very honest and they, they were able to do that. And the symphonic band performed three selections, very standard literature, very challenging literature, and they received a score of a 95 from these two judges, averaged out to a 95. So, I want to congratulate them and thank them for their dedication to making great music. Makes my job really easy. I look forward to come to work every day and because of them, so thank you guys. And those of you that are in jazz ensemble, jazz band, jazz combo, and R&B project, you guys can stay. So, you see that we have two very successful programs at the Middle School, so therefore, we have to keep on trying to give students opportunities. And that's why now, we have four instrumental jazz groups at Hampden Academy. We have the jazz band, which is directed by Mr. Ladman, who couldn't be here tonight, and that's for students who just have that desire to keep on playing. We have actually some students who play in every single group. I think Maxi, one of them, plays in all four jazz groups. Bailey plays in three, Lexi plays in three, and you know, we have a lot, and you play in three, Alex does as well. So, they're very, very dedicated and they put in a lot of time, a lot of practicing, but just rehearsal time is pretty intense, too. And so, the jazz band, R&B project, combo, and jazz ensemble were assessed, we were supposed to go to a district festival at MDI and it was snowed out, so we couldn't go on the makeup date because we were hosting the Vocal Jazz Festival the next day of the makeup date. So, I brought in three really highly respected educators who are now retired to come in and assess our four groups. And again, it is the same standard that they would use at any jazz festival, the same rubric, the same score sheet. And all four groups came in with a superior rating. So, we brought some of them to the State Jazz Festival in South Portland, some of them we really couldn't bring because of, there's a doubling rule. If you're playing in more than one ensemble, you can't be competing in four different things. So, we brought the R&B project as an exhibition group to perform for those students that were waiting for awards to happen and they performed to a rousing ovation. So, raise your hand if you're an R&B project. And these students played at McGraw School, they played for the Poetry Out Loud, we're actually going to be doing a thing in August, actually, with your approval, for the Race for the Cure at the Lafayette Cancer Research Center in August. They've asked us to do that, so we'll be performing for large crowd. It'll be great. They'll be rock stars. So, anyway, that's the R&B project. The jazz combo, directed also by Mr. Ladman. If you didn't know, Mr. Ladman has a degree in composition for Berklee College of Music. He's also in high tech here in the Life Skills Room, very talented man. So, he directs the jazz band and jazz combo. The jazz combo this year went to the State Jazz Festival and while we were waiting for the awards, they got one of the top awards. They're one of the top two combos in Division Two, Division One in the state of Maine and from that, they award five outstanding musicianship awards. Students that are, you know, just over the top, really crazy good. And we had two. We had Nate Hayden on bass guitar and we had Gary Child. And it's always great to hear when you're sitting back and listening and watching the judges do their thing. And one of the judges, who I've known for a long time, is kind of a hard nut to crack, you know? If you do something well and he goes, "Wow, you knew it was really good." So, during the combo presentation, and they were playing this tune, Donna Lee, and Nate was doubling the melody, it was really crazy hard, and I heard him go, "Wow." So, we knew we really did something great to make this judge say what he said. And then, the next day, we perform with the large ensembles and that was, we were Division Two with large jazz ensembles and they award, again, every jazz ensemble has got several soloists. Most times, you might have four or five. I believe this year, we had nine or 10. Students that are composing on the spot, they get up and improvise. They make things up as they go along, bass and chord changes. And we had so many kids willing to take that risk, I was totally blown away by it. I'm in a position now where they come to me with so many great skills that I have to, I got to find the hardest stuff I can find to give to them, you know? It's like, and they's like, "Yeah, give it to us, we want more." And so, they, once again, as you know, they've had great success the last few years and once again, they were in the top two in Division Two at the State Jazz Festival and also Bailey got another award for his soloing in the big band as well. So, incredible group of students who are so dedicated to what they do. And I'm hoping, is there a board meeting on May 18th?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
You need to change that day. Could you change that day? I'll tell you why. Because we're doing a very special thing on May 18th. You'll hear these students perform, but we're also bringing in some professionals to work with these students and perform an American Jazz premiere. And we're going to be bringing in these pros to play music that's never been performed ever in the Hishell since it's been composed since 1978, when I was a kid. And, yeah, I was a kid once. And therefore, it's going to be a wonderful evening of music. We're paying tribute to two jazz legends. Clark Terry was a phenomenal jazz educator who influenced thousands and thousands of people around the world. We're playing music that was written for him and we're going to be featuring some, from people from around the state. We're also paying tribute to my teacher, my mentor, Don Stratton, passed away three days ago and we're going to have a group of people, it's the Don Stratton Tribute Orchestra. It's got a big band with strings as well. You don't want to miss it, really. You got to change that day. You can't do that. How do you recognize? Thank you once again for having us.
Thank you very much.
Is that also with the fundraiser? Isn't that also with the fundraiser for, that you split the Lafayette Center and something's going here? I told the same thing.
Just to explain that, we're, there is an admission to that and we're splitting it to our jazz program, so when we travel, we can help pay expenses. We're also giving half the admission to the Lafayette Cancer Research Center as well, so we'll be supporting, playing it forward, you know?
Nice job. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to take a minute to speak to Reed's Brook, who they really weren't able to be here tonight, so I'm assuming that they'll come back a different night. But, they're, they do an incredible job, so I didn't want you to think that we're overwhelmed or whatever. They're amazing, amazing group of kids there as well, so I know you're looking forward to hearing about what they were doing. And I have to comment right now that we have an incredible, incredible, incredible music staff here. I'm very fortunate, the people that I work with, that I work with, hopefully, I teach some and we can kind of steal from each other, like, it makes us all that much better. Kids are fantastic and we're hoping that we can always be there for them and do what we can do to the best of our abilities. So, I know that you realize the work that we do, I may hear it from you, so, but I wanted, I just want to express it, that it's a fantastic staff and thank you for the opportunities that you give us to do what we do with the kids that we have, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Okay, switching theme, we're going to go to Destination Imagination, but we're going to go back to Samuel Wagner Middle School. Cora Swalick is going to give us an overview.
It's not just Wagner.
Okay, Cora.
I've been, we've been in this school district for 23 years and I got involved with Odyssey of the Mind when my second grader brought on the flyer and said, "I want to do this." And that's how most adults that get involved in Odyssey of the Mind are now, it's Destination Imagination, get pulled into it and some of us just stay. I've been the district coordinator for the last 11 years, but I've served, you know, been a parent and I've served as a team manager more than I can count. But I am here with four teams tonight. We brought lots of bling and we brought lots of energy, so the fact that they've just sat very still for 50 minutes, I just, I really couldn't apologize. So, I want to start with the Rising Star Team from McGraw. Les French has been very generous and has coached the team for all three years at McGraw and is going to coach at Weatherby, he said. I'll let you introduce.
So, this is my third year. These two are two of five on the Rising Stars Team, which is a pre-competitive is a pre-competitive team in Destination Imagination. And they did a central challenge and an instant challenge at, at Orno University of Maine, just a few weeks ago, while I was very ill. And in these three years, these guys have taught me a lot. So, if you guys want to, why don't you tell them about our challenge in chickens and buses?
Chicken and buses.
You tell them quickly what you guys did?
There was a chicken driving a school bus, and the chicken got arrested for not having a driver's license, and it also hit a tree.
I arrested who?
She was the chicken. I was the police officer. And there was another police officer.
And also, I had a Godzilla head.
So the great thing about Destination Imagination is basically, I'm just a mediator to keep them from hurting themselves and me. And, and really, I just let their imaginations run wild. It's because it never in a million years would I come up with a chicken and a Godzilla police officer. So, I just want to thank Cora for coordinating this for so many years, because this is my third year with them, but I've done Rising Stars one other time, well, Audrey a long time ago. So, and she's actually, was an incremental part to helping out with this team this year, too. So, it's been great. And that's it. Thank you. Kathleen is, yes?
I'd like to, I also want to recognize the adults that help appraise and volunteer at the state competitions, because that's a really important part. We can't do it without the adult that helps. So Kathleen is way, I want to thank you for volunteering, because that's often hard to get people to volunteer, because they want to watch their kids perform. So, I appreciate it. And then, the other three teams we had are all from Winterport. So I want to invite the Rising Star team from Smith School. Did you bring a copy?
No.
No, but they brought, you brought this bling, right? Yep. So, you had, did you have a name for your team?
The Mysticals.
The Mysticals. And what did you do? They had to do something to do with maps and changing direction.
We, at first, we started from Maine, then went to Texas, then went to Florida, then went to the Bahamas, and then went to Paris.
Which was your favorite place to go?
I would have mostly wanted to go to the Bahamas.
And, let's see, let's introduce your names. Introduce who you are.
Eva, Lydia.
And you all have a sibling doing what?
DI.
They all have siblings on the older DI teams. So that's kind of neat. And I know that Eva, is it because of you coming that your sister went back to doing DI's? One of you, I can't remember.
It was me.
She came, we gravely host some events here at Hampden Academy. We had some instant challenge workshops, and some expo to explain what DI was. We invited all the surrounding area to come to it. And Eva came, and her sister happened to come along with her, because siblings often get dragged to stuff, and then all of a sudden, Olivia was, came through on the roster for the DI team. So, they might go away for a year or two, but they, she'd come back, if they're not too busy with other stuff. But so you had, do you have six? I think they had six on the team. But you three performed at States.
Yeah.
First one's quick.
It starts, it starts in October, and it went all the way through April. And that's a long time for this age group. Plus, you have a lot of different sports in there, and all of a sudden, half the team leaves, because they've all got basketball practice. So, it's great that you three did it, and you are very excited, right, with all your siblings. And your siblings aren't on the same team, they're on two different teams. So, this is the future. I want to invite the fifth grade team from Wagner up here, and I'm gonna let them do the talking. But I do want to mention, in the last twenty years, we've had fourteen teams from, well, we actually had fifteen qualify, but one year, a team didn't go. We had, we've had fourteen teams go to DI Global. So we have, we do have two this year, contrary to, there's some misconceptions out there, that there's just one from Wagner. There's two teams at Wagner, and I refer to them as the fifth grade team and the sixth grade team, because they happen to be all fifth grade on the one team and all sixth grade. So I will let you guys talk. Okay, what chant, you guys?
We chose the meme event challenge, which was the community service challenge. And in this challenge, we had to help something. We had to do some sort of community service, and we had to make a meme explaining what, how we were trying to help.
I'm gonna interject a minute. How many of you know what a meme is? Because I did not know. And I'm not sure I still know.
Nice. Now, that's better. Look at the bride on Richard over there.
So, for me, we drew a picture of a sad, distraught cat, and a happy, well-taken-care cat. And above the sad cat, it says, "Before we helped," and "After." And over here, it says, "After we helped." And below, it says, "You can make a difference." We wanted to let people know that by donating any amount of money, they were making a difference, because they were helping animals. We put the meme on everything we used to help us reach our goal, like flyers, posters, some collection cans, and our t-shirts.
I'm gonna interject here. They also raised six hundred and thirty dollars for the animal orphanage that they decided to support.
That's great.
And they also did all the phone calling and contacting people all themselves, which I was pretty impressed with.
I have a list of things that worked and didn't work. And some of the things that worked were, when we used the meme and we talked about it to people, they always seemed to stop and care. Also, bake sales were a really easy way to make money, along with putting cans in the businesses. Some things that we thought didn't really work, where we tried to have more bake sales, but we couldn't find any other places that would let us. Ways that we raised the money were putting collection cans in businesses, bottle drives, bake sales, and we wrote letters to Walmart stores and asking for money.
And this is raising money for their challenge, which was the community service part, because it's not the part where, you know, going to Global's. So the kids had to come up and do all the footwork and do it all.
Overall, we had two bake sales. They were both really successful. At Martin's Bake Sale, one of the issues was, people were saying that they'd come, like, when they're out, they'd come and buy stuff, but they ended up not coming back. And we realized that, at the Martin's Bake Sale, people came up and wanted to donate, just because they didn't even buy anything. They just donated because they were either from Old Town, or they liked animals.
And you got first place at States.
Yeah.
And you are headed where?
To Center City.
So you're gonna go to DI Global, and it's about five or six days. Have any of you stayed on college campus before?